Well. Yeah, let's just go ahead and proceed.
All right, thank you. At this time, it is six oh four, and I call this work session of September the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
May I?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas here, councilmember Lina Rayo.
There.
And councilmember Laritson, Phil Grant, and Laura Perkins-Green.
All right, thank you.
It's our understanding that Mayor Perkins-Green will be joining us.
Late.
As she is able a little bit later.
Okay. At this time, with the optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go to approval of agenda, I want to let everybody know that in order to keep this meeting under, you know, control, the maximum for any given presentation will be about ten minutes. That had been said, some of you will need that time and some of you will not. So we'd appreciate brevity whenever possible. Thank you. So I'm asking for approval of the agenda. And I have one change I would like to suggest, and that is the Tabor Opera House would be moving to first in the presentation because Sarah has to go. And so we appreciate her need to do that and no reason not to not not to move forward. I would entertain a motion then, or if are there any other changes to the agenda that anybody would like to pose? In which case I would entertain a motion with changes as suggested.
Councilmember Thomas moves to approve the agenda with the change of moving the presentation on the Tabor Opera House to first in the agenda.
No, man, that's seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you. At this time, we have public comments about items not on the agenda. Is anyone very like to speak to city council? We would love to hear from you. Okay, thank you very much. In which case, we are into goal setting and we want to hear first from the Tabor Opera House.
Yes, all. Thank you very much. If you're good, just want you to do.
All right, perfect.
Okay, great. I am joined by Amy Tate, our board secretary for the Tabor Opera House, and first let me just say thank you so much for making accommodations to move me a little bit further and also for the time today. So first and foremost, I think we can all celebrate a fantastic summer season at the Tabor Opera House. I hope we all had a chance, everybody, to come. If not, still two more chances. We have the Leadville Main Street Auction is coming Saturday, which is going to be awesome. And we have the Stories Worth Telling Film Festival. I have posters to hand out about that. That is on October, Saturday, the fourteenth, five P M. It's too not to be missed. Great grand old prizes, and we're going to see you there. Those are our really robust season. I also wanted to express gratitude for the opportunity that the city has given the Tabor to really grow our organization, our foundation, and partnership with you all over the last several years, actually, which is hard to believe. Since twenty seventeen, we've leveraged your investment of four hundred and seven thousand dollars into nearly five million dollars. So for about just under, you know, eight percent of an investment, you received almost five million dollars in reinvestment into your own property. And we're really proud to be stewards of that property and continue to be doing the critical maintenance work, hunting down funders, grants, whether it's tax credits, individual donors, or grant opportunities. We leave no stone unturned. And this season has been no exception to that. We are, you know, really trying to fundraise a lot and leverage a lot. We received a generous seventy thousand dollar individual donation that we are trying to match as a challenge match this season, and we are on target to at least double that, although our goal is three hundred and fifty thousand in individual donations by the end of this year. So we'll see where we come, but right now we're covering almost a hundred and twenty thousand individual donations. And Amy, I think I'm gonna cut off you for the next little section.
Okay, I have time now. Okay. Pardon me, I'm with you. So good evening, Mayor and your councilmember, and Lori. I just wanted to let you know I'm Leadville resident with a deep passion for the Tabor Opera House and what it does for the community. We, I've, we've talked a lot about what we've accomplished this year, and I know you guys are proud as the board members, as you should be, our own Tabor Opera House board members, about what we've completed. We had a successful construction this season, finishing up the outside of the building, the rest of the masonry rehabilitation, as well as the ghost sign on the north side of the building. I hope you've noticed that. It was amazing. Very talented artists involved in that. Next season, we're actively fundraising for completing the two front cornices, as well as the storefront windows, the wood balcony, and then getting the stubbing in the utilities on the, what was the vacant St. Louis Avenue, so that we can be rehabilitation every coming year. All of this progress and funding aside, we mean it's the biggest rehabilitation work still ahead, so we're trying to get ourselves in a good place for all of that. And tonight, we're asking city council to consider supporting our collective vision, which we battle in the chamber by making a strong funding commitment. Once again, we always appreciate that, and take the benefit of the community and help us to continue to build the works and the works in our sort of, et cetera.
So I know this is included in your packet, but we did provide a couple of printouts as well for you all to take a look at. And I know you're specifically looking at what our goals are for the twenty twenty-four season. So as Amy mentioned, we want to basically complete the exterior renovations in twenty twenty-four and potentially going into twenty twenty-five that will essentially put the raincoat on the building, if you will, and ensure that we have a little bit of time and leaven ground to re-mobilize for the fundraising campaign for the interior rehab, which is going to be a lot more intensive and a lot more costly, and really expand ourselves as a board to go beyond what we've normally done. So we got smaller kind of funders through the Department of Local Affairs, through the State Historic Fund, our historic tax credits, which we will continue to go to when they are committed to seeing us through the project. We need to expand them. So we have abundant capital campaign feasibility study for the fourth acron. We've been waiting to launch that, or we will be doing that in twenty twenty-four. The reason we waited to do that, we wanted to wrap a business plan, which we completed this spring in twenty twenty-three, and we needed to do a revised, refreshed plan for our strategic plan to chart out the next three years of goals. So we are having that retreat with our eleven-member board and two senior liaisons on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. That, together, those three, going to create the whole blade of the school, if you will, the three ways, the feasibility study for the capital campaign of the interior, the completed business plan that we completed this year, and our refreshed three-year strategic plan. In addition to that, we want to continue to build capacity and community partnerships in our season. So we did about thirteen events this year. That includes our community partnerships, like the Main Street Program. Last year, we helped them raise thirteen thousand dollars for their program. We also have had other different groups that we've been working with, so whether it's the county with the visit level and kind of the shoulder season with the story compelling event, or whether that's, you know, helping participate in events outside of the Tabor walls, because we're also really strategically thinking that we need to get our brand awareness outside of the Tabor walls for when we initially have to close down for a couple of years for the interior. So it makes sense for us to be partners with other community nonprofits. So we've been doing a couple of events across the street at the Old Church with the Civic Fundor Association, very successfully. That fundraises for St. George's Food Clinic, that fundraises for Cloud City Wheelers. So we're able to be, you know, a anchor that rises all tides, and that's how we're going to see ourselves moving forward. So we want to continue maintaining at capacity right now that thirteen-ish events per season. We know we're committed to the city to offer you your space that you need it. We also want to use it as a meeting space. In twenty twenty-four, we'll also be having the mining reclamation of the state. We'll be having their conference here in Leadville, which is exciting. It's always been down in the Telluride range, and they approached us and we said, yes, we're going to be their keynote opening ceremony at the Tabor Opera House in May. In addition to that, we also need to expand our own staff needs. So if we're going to really raise the twenty, sometimes twenty-five million dollars, that, you know, keeps rising with the cost of inflation and what it takes to really do conservative and sort of rehabilitation efforts. We need a development director to help us really expand and look for even more funders utilizing that capital feasibility study. So really, our goals are to continue live performances at the Tabor Opera House in partnership with your leader of Leadville, another nonprofit with benefits by getting half of the ticket sales that you generously have sponsored our season, operational support for our growing capacity as Tabor staff, and to continue doing some routine maintenance of the building we repair while we facilitate the grants and construction to finish up the exterior of the building, which will be a really exciting moment for all of us.
So in the six years since we've had the foundation and in partnership with the city of Leadville, this public-private partnership has been instrumental in allowing us to create this as a true benefit for the community. The city has allocated three hundred and fifty thousand to the Tabor operations over this six-year period and another roughly fifty-two thousand for building repairs. So as you can see, is where our foundation is is doing a great job of leveraging that money and now, et cetera, even better.
We're also being strategic because we know we don't want future generations to be in this language that we're in right now, having to do such a possible here in sixty-plus years of deferred maintenance. So we are holding back ten to twenty percent of our historic tax credits. So we get them reserved through our project, through the construction season. So the construction season that's just wrapping this season, then we'll be putting all of those influences that we've incurred throughout the last two years with the state, and they will give us thirty-five percent back in basically tax credits that we then sell. We have a commitment with Commerce Bank for buying it on ninety cents on the dollar. Then we get that back as cash infusion. That money we put right back into the rehab project, but we're holding back ten to twenty percent, and we're building an endowment to grow and building maintenance fund in perpetuity so that it can build, and we're arguing that right now. So before we can really call it an endowment, that's kind of a bigger name, but we put that intention into motion, and so we put that into a six-month CD that we're renewing, and it's averaging four point nine to five point one percent in interest. So we are being very good stewards with the money and your project to ensure that we can get there. Okay, we've got one minute left. So, Amy, okay. I mean, as good as it's looking on the outside, we get this perception that the work is done, and really, it's just the beginning. And there is this misnomer of why we do what we did first, and like I said before, it really is the raincoat. We needed to stop the more decaying of the bricks and water getting into the building, and that's been a big challenge for me for this community, and we realize that. But that's only the beginning, but we are in the long haul and we're ready to be your partners, but we need you to continue to fund us until we can be sustainable. We cannot really do this work without you, and we're happy to do it with you in partnership, and we thank you for your commitment so far.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Amy. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Well, we'll see you about a show. Come on out. Okay, thank you.
Soon this weekend.
Yeah. I saw you bought your ticket.
I did. I don't know. I don't know if I'm going to have to outfit somebody for the wheelbarrow of alcohol was here. It was not. That was Jim Burman last year, and he's not paying attention.
Yes.
No, you just got volunteered to do something. It's okay. Okay.
Next up, we have administration.
All right, so Hannah, can I share my screen?
Yeah.
So Hannah is handing out our administrative, Administration Department, twenty twenty-three recap of goals, and then twenty twenty-four goals. Sorry, we had a little, we're probably just getting those out today, so. Let me share. All right, so let's start with twenty twenty-three Administration Department Goals Recap. So this being the first full year that I have been the city administrator, there was a lot of, you know, infrastructure work that we wanted to do. These are goals. This isn't everything we accomplished. So at the end of twenty twenty-two, I did a accomplishments recap and do that, but this was basically just some key goals. And, you know, the mayor may laugh, but I guess I've said this more than once. Sometimes I bite off more than I can chew. So you'll see, we we had some pretty big overall arching goals, and a lot of them are in progress or completed. But this isn't, like I said, this isn't everything. But the first thing was improve city communication internally, because one of the things I noticed initially was that departments functioned very well, but they function almost independently from each other. And so getting departments to coordinate better, to talk to each other, to figure out what opportunities had to work together. One of the things I still would like to do, and you can see on this number one A, is creating an intranet page. We're, we are getting dragged kicking and screaming by me into a more modern age of how we access information. And so one of the things we've been looking at is a website overhaul, and I'll get to that in a second. But in the process of doing a website overhaul, I'd like to create an intranet for our employees where we have access to lots of different documents that are a little harder. They're available, but they're a little harder to find, such as the employee handbook, administrative policies, human resources documents. So those are all available right now. They're just in different places and sometimes not as easily located. So this is in process. We have met with multiple different website developers about doing this project. And frankly, I have just run out of time to try and get the website done and have this part of this project, but it is in process. We have quotes from several different website developers, and so this will be the intranet part of it, and the website will be rolled over into twenty twenty-four, but it is in process. Number one B, I think this is pretty straightforward, but we weren't really having all staff meetings, like literally all staff meetings. I wanted to make sure the staff actually knew who they worked with. So we had several all-staff meetings and just general announcements. You know, everything from, you know, opportunities for healthcare provider. Dr. Lisa came in. We talked a lot about the rollout of the family program, and Erin is going to continue to educate our employees on the family program, but explaining not to complicated programs. So and then I attended department meetings from each of the departments, at least one or two, which, multiple department meetings, the streets is the hardest. Streets meets at six o'clock in the morning. So I do remember one time I met with the streets department at six o'clock, and then was at a city council meeting until nine o'clock, and I felt like that was a day I definitely earned my, earned my keep. But I have been attending a lot of the individual department meetings, just so I know what's going on with all the departments. So one C, department heads meetings. This has been a critical thing, and it's, I think, been fantastic for getting departments to communicate with each other. We have a meeting every Wednesday after city council, regular city council meetings, to recap anything that city council did or passed or is thinking about doing that the city needs to implement. Because I found that a lot of times, nobody told the staff what happened at the city council meetings. So passing along that information that this temporary use permit for this event was passed, and we need this from streets and getting streets to coordinate with police. You've heard the Leadville one hundred talk about how well and smoothly our events went, and I really appreciate the coordination among the departments for that. We now have a citywide distribution list, so you can just type in Leadville full-time, and you get all the full-time employees, and that's kept up to date. You can type in Leadville part-time, and you can email all the employees. So that's a great way of being able to communicate simply and easily amongst the city. So administrative operations, we're updating the employee handbook. You've heard a lot about that. We went, chose Aaron, did a lot of legwork. We chose Lexi Paul, and that will be a fantastic online employee handbook. It's a big lift. It's an hour a week. And I don't even know if we're on chapter three or four yet, but that will be in progress to be completed in twenty twenty-four. Looking at our software management systems for timekeeping and payroll, we use Casell. I have Lorraine Trotter, a professional management solution. She consults with a lot of cities. I had her come in and look at how we're using Casell and our finances and accounting management systems, and, you know, she gave Donna a thumbs up, but she's going to have some recommendations. I did that now because I wanted to have a new finance director come in and not learn one system, and then we're going to implement some changes. I thought it would be best to have our new finance director come in and have some of those changes in progress. And so Casell, I think there are plenty of things that we can do to make our payroll processing a lot more efficient and also have a little more hands-on for our supervisors. So that is a progress. Okay, number three, we're talking about making city applications and permits online. That's just not completed. That is just complete lack of staff time to be able to do that, but that, we're going to, if I didn't carry that over to twenty twenty-four, we will. But we are continuing to scan and create documents digitally. I want to thank Hannah as our deputy city clerk for making sure we're getting resolutions and ordinances online. It's so much easier to research that, having all that online. And planning is putting a lot of their documents, scanning a lot of those documents, so they're digitally accessible. New processes to expedite licenses. So Hannah inherited a handbook. I wish all of our departments had this from Maida Silver, a prior deputy city clerk, and has been keeping that updated. So we have a written process for processing licenses and renewals. And, you know, we don't get that many marijuana license renewals, and and we're improving the process and learning so that we have those as smooth as possible for anyone who needs that service from the city. So municipal code updates. Number four, so there were a lot of code updates that you saw, mostly relating to planning, but this is a lot of cleaning up inconsistencies. So we provide consistent information and decrease response time for folks when they want to know what they can do or they can't do. And our code is potentially unclear and needs to be cleaned up. So you saw table of uses updates. Code sections relating to demolitions and also historic preservation. So those are big, heavy, less, a lot of work on the planning department, city attorney's office, and then, of course, public hearings and getting input and buy-in on those. The last one was evaluating bringing the city attorney position in-house, and we did that as part of Meeshaw, Cox, and McCaskin indicating that they could not service any longer. We, I looked at bringing that position in-house, and we just realized that the the depth of legal service that we get from the law firm was much greater than bringing that position in-house for the time being. So we completed that. So now let me move on to twenty twenty-four Administration Department Goals, and trying very hard not to bite off more than I can chew. So this is only one page of goals, but they're along the same lines. So improve city communication externally and internally. So as you can see, we've got overhaul the website. That is a critical piece of information for for the public now to get information. We also have to have ADA compliant by the summer of twenty twenty-four. And so we're looking at the overhaul of the website and creating the city internet. I would like to create a city newsletter. Doesn't have to be fancy. The city, the town of Mintern has basically a Word document that they send out, and the community loves it. So that leads into the bottom one C there. I think we need a part-time communications manager. We talked about this for the last couple rounds of goals. I think part-time would be sufficient, but working on the website, working on the newsletter, working on pushing out communications to the public, I think that that is. Because right now, your communications manager is me, and my way of communicating is I sometimes am able to text the newspaper. So that can certainly be improved. Improved administrative operations. We're going to finalize the employee handbook in twenty twenty-four, and then better utilize Casell. As I mentioned, we've got some analysis coming from Lorraine Trotter about how we can better utilize Casell. Because we pay for it, I think there are a lot of features that we could continue that we can use that would make us a lot more efficient. So capitalize on available grant funding for the city's needs. We have had this need to be able to get grant money. We meet with Senator Bennett's office. Matt Fritter will say, you know, there's grants out there, and we say this is a cycle where the wealthy communities can apply for the grants, so they get the grants, and then they get the money. And then they have the money, and we don't. So it's a cycle that we're in. I really strongly believe we need to have a part-time grants manager. It could be part of communications if we got a person who could do both, but we are missing out on a lot of opportunities for grants. Armed fire and police. I send Dan and Ken emails all the time with opportunities for funding, and sometimes we just don't have the bandwidth to apply for them. So this part-time grants manager pursue grant funding for the community center and also for other departments. And then win those grant opportunities. You'll get D. I'm on those lists, and I see some of those grant opportunities, and I don't want to have to pass them off. It is, it is money for our taking, and we are letting it essentially fall through our fingers. Finally, continuing to improve customer service. I wanted to roll over that goal of making city applications and permits, online fulfillment forms. And then I wanted to talk about, you know, a lot of people don't, in our community, don't use online. They come to city hall. So I had our previous administrative assistant, I'm not sure if any of you noticed, but the pegboard with outside, we updated and made sure it was accurate as far as what was on what floor, but it's very outdated. So having a digital entrance or index for when people come into city hall so they know where to go, and then also having some type of information for each person at city hall to indicate, like I have a very old-fashioned system. Someone tapes my calendar to my door, so you can see where I am and what I'm doing. You know, Chapin has a write-on wipe-off board, but having something that's a little more digital, so that if I change my schedule, that piece of paper may not be accurate. But having a system where people can see what services they need and how they can get them, and when someone might be in or back to talk to that person. So we do have a lot of people coming to city hall. So I think those are, that's not everything we were going to accomplish in twenty twenty-four, but those are some of the key priorities, I think, for administration, because we are missing out on some opportunities, I think, in order to work with our community and get funding for our community. So I think I'm usually not over, but I'm about two minutes over. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is close to perfect, if we can get.
Usually I'm a little under, and I yield my time to Tim Burman, but. All right, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the minister? So you're you're really asking for the addition of two part-time positions.
Correct.
In in your plans for twenty twenty-four, okay?
Yeah, we talked about both of them. I would, it would, in a perfect world, we would have one person be able to do both of those. What we've found in our community is part-time positions are hard to fill. A lot of times, people will piece together multiple part-time positions, and then we lose them. We have struggled with that with the animal shelter from day one. So we converted most of the animal shelter positions to full-time so that we could offer benefits, and we could also offer people hours, because a lot of times we'll lose people because they have an opportunity to get more hours or consistent hours somewhere else. So that would be my goal.
I think I don't have any questions, but I I guess I'd like to take this time to make a comment. I'm delighted that we're thinking about hiring some additional staff for the city. In my short tenure as city council so far, it seems like the city is running really thin. I know that you've been working really hard to get payroll out. I've had an opportunity to meet with Tony Medina at the shop for an hour, and he's down two or three people. I know we've got several openings in the police department, and I'm sure you're all over trying to fill those openings. But it just seems like we really need to focus in twenty twenty-four on trying to meet the business of city government. And I think, I think this will go a long way towards that, and I love the idea of getting some help with grant writing, because I think you're right. We just see a lot of grant money just right past us that we could take full advantage of.
Yeah, and to give credit where, you know, Chief Daley in the firefighter, he knows how to chase the money. He has done a fantastic job of chasing money. The bandwidth for other departments to do that isn't, is, you know, Dan's been in that position for ten years and has created a fantastic team of individuals, other departments. We don't have that bandwidth yet. What I was going to say is you're you're giving me a nice prelude to our next city council meeting, because I, you know, we're, we have positions that are open and sometimes a lack of applicants, and so. positions that are open and sometimes a lack of applicants. And so we're gonna have to talk about pay. Um, so we do have a copy of the salary survey and it will be a discussion at the next city council meeting about how we can attract talent because you know, we are in a small community and our talent pool is very small and we need to think about ways of being more competitive. And salary is one of the ways I think we're gonna have to look at being more competitive.
Do we have any positions now that are open that haven't been advertised yet? Uh, the interim police chief.
Yeah, police chief and um, a maintenance worker.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Hmm, that's just to follow up on that grant writer thing. I working in the nonprofit sector for uh, basically all my adult life, I don't think you're gonna find a day part-time grant writer, to be honest. It tends to be a pretty full-time position. Um, not only because of just purely how much work it can become, but also just like the expertise that's needed um, for that specific type of work tends to be people who are more career oriented and aren't necessarily looking for part-time work most of the time. That's uh, obviously, I don't know the full situation of like what types of grants and how much grant work they would require, how much uh, maintenance they would require. So.
Yeah, and I think that's good feedback. I because I also don't know how, you know, communications wise, you know, some of these positions we're creating, we're trying to figure out what the plate looks like. And I would suspect if we hired a full-time grants person, they would, they would not, it would not be full-time work for a little while until things were ramped up. So it's possible if we got somebody within us, a broad range of skills, we could make that full-time job and at some point it becomes more grants and we look at, you know, some other way to handle communications. Do you, do you think that if it was is it too weird to comply in grants and communications or those?
Um, I mean, there are people who can do it. It's uh, like the absolute most like diverse skills set. They both require communication, just very, very specific type of communication into Uber.
Right.
So I don't think it's necessarily like the weirdest thing by any means. Um, that said, hiring a part-time communications person might be easier than a grant writer or a grant upkeep person. Right? So.
Okay.
It's my opinion that either of those are going to have to be contracted out.
Yeah.
I don't know that you're gonna find a person, especially a grant writer, uh, that's going to fulfill the need. It's not already very experienced and have a lot of connections. So just a thought.
Okay.
Any other questions for Evan? Thank you very much. Okay, next up, animal shelter.
Is this where we play that ceremony bottom song?
Yeah, I worked out the A S P T and not by heart. Good. Um, so for our twenty twenty four animal shelter department goals, um, we still are looking at increasing the horse based out of at the animal shelter. So last year we got feedback from other facilities and what they would recommend. Um, this year I know there's um, land measurements being taken place and in the county and city. Um, and then we're doing measurements at the animal shelter just so we can kind of piece things together for what we would um, hopefully propose in twenty twenty four. Roughly, um, this year we've had two hundred dogs registered for their dog license and we know there are probably three times that's the dogs within the city and county that have registered, but um, two hundred dog licenses so far that we can count towards our data. Next, um, we have improved animal control services for the community. So I've offered training for dispatch, the S O and the P D. Um, I have fulfilled some training with the police department and then we do have a meeting with the S O and the P D upcoming of the chief and the sheriff to discuss additional trainings for law enforcement officers when they're in the field. Um, so I'm not getting calls after hours about puppies being found at houses. Um, and we would ideally like to add two animal control officers to the sheltering staff after more research and investigation. They do have to be under law enforcement. Um, but I know we have like Aaron Born or Eric Born previously who worked for the police department and was assigned as the animal shelter liaison. So I'll be talking to the chief about that sort of option. Um, unfortunately, even they were certified animal control officers and they were certified through the courses. They're built civilians and they can go onto or private property. Um, so they would still be able to be dispatched if they were shelter employees, but they couldn't go on steam or credit property without law enforcement. So that's why they would need to be conditioned under some sort of law enforcement infancy and be assigned to the animal shelter. And we also want to increase the number of fosters we have, which we have several onboarded now to probably go when we had those nineteen kittens come in. Um, we had two kitty fosters that agreed to take two litters. So they had two litters each, so four litters that were out and about in foster homes and that helped with staff. So we're not cleaning as much. Um, and then once the animals are ready for their adoption, they're staying either, they can come back to the shelter to receive that and then go up for adoption. And for the Maddie Spun training, uh, that is all free online resources. So that saves um, financial resources. And then addressing the overcrowding at the shelter by increasing fosters. So um, fosters are great for the animals to get a break from the shelter for the staff to have less work. But then we only have six dog animals and seven cat kennels. So if we have six dogs, we don't have, you can place to put additional animals. So they're having adoptable animals um, into foster or medical animals in foster that does clear out kennels for incoming animals. Um, that was a big part of the no kill movement. But then back in the day, if you had six dog kennels and a seventh dog was brought in, the dog that was there the longest was euthanized. Um, thankfully, you don't have to do that anymore. And then on that note, we want to decrease animal length of stay. That's kind of every shelter's big goal. The longer animals are in a shelter facility, um, the less adoptable they can become. And we know anywhere from two to four weeks a dog can begin to deteriorate. So they'll lose their house training. Um, and everybody here gets worse and worse, which is a, a spiral for that um, unadoptable track unfortunately. And then on that note of animal ture- deterioration, sorry. Um, while at the animal shelter, increasing fosters and volunteers are going to help. We can have weekend fosters where they just go and sit on the couch for the weekend. We've had long-term fosters take dogs to the lake. Um, so just getting that out there into the public so that they know that's an option. And then hosting an open house. We have one this year, but we would like to have them quarterly. So maybe like February, May, August, October, avoid the holiday seasons. And then continue to support the local animal community by providing the low-cost vaccine and microchip clinic. That was on our goals for twenty twenty three. And we did host one low-cost clinic. Um, unfortunately, as shelter workers, we are not able to vaccinate owned animals. So we have to work with a vet. But just recently, we did have two nonprofits reach out to me that want to partner with us, um, and one who actually wants to fund a clinic for community. Um, they just need to find a company as well. And last but not least is maintain animal shelter personnel safety while the shelter is open to the public. Um, so while it would be great to have two more staff members, one for the dog room, one for the cat room, one for the office and one to work on management things. Um, we've found that three is the minimum. Two's great so that you're always safe. But then as we found on Monday, I'm taking dogs to the vet, which leaves the new shelter staff member by herself. So she cannot interact with the public, not interact with the animals for safety. So she ended up just sitting there watching some training videos at the moment. Um, but by having three staff members, those two can continue to maintain the shelter and its function while the third person is attending to vets and errands.
How many, how many people short are you currently against? What is your current staffing goal?
We have another part-time person coming on. And then we would be one person down, but unfortunately we've had a lot of people who can't commit to a four-day-a-week um, schedule. So they can do like Sunday, Monday, maybe Friday. So it's a lot of plugging my people into us.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for animal shelter?
I've got one. There's a little bit on here about supporting the local animal community with low-cost vaccine and microchip clinics. Is there an opportunity uh, to help with spay neutering as well? Then maybe you wouldn't get litters of kittens?
Yeah, there is and there isn't. Um, I have discussed with other nonprofits, the T N R program. So that's where most of our kittens are coming from, our community cats that are not fixed. Um, so trap meter return. There are some state regulations about that. So the shelter cannot go out and trap the animals, but public, members of the public can trap the animals. Um, unfortunately, just since we're in an area with limited vet coverage, we would have to either have all the animals in a U-Haul and drive them down to a low-cost clinic, um, either Dunkingame or Land Petting International would help us with that. Um, there's one or two vets who could come up here, but they need like a large clinic that they can just kind of knock them out and we don't have that facility here.
No, they did. Dr. Jeff has done a couple different clinics, uh, spay and neuter clinics. Is that still a possibility in twenty twenty four?
I'm not sure for twenty twenty four. Um, I know when we've gone down there, so we partnered with him in twenty twenty since then, he's partnered with Land Petting for the clinics.
Okay.
Um, when we've gone down there currently for our um, animals for their spay neuter surgery, she's not at the clinic. So I know he's having some health issues, so it's gonna be.
Okay, just curious.
I think one of the challenges that we've had just in our community is uh, lack of veterinary care.
It's nationwide right now too.
Yeah, but you know, one of the, you know, when we're looking at the last goal, they're about maintaining the animal shelter safety. We're transporting sometimes animals to vets a lot because we don't have somebody here. So there's a lot of transport to some in Denver for animals. And so there is a staff person that needs to do that. And if we had, you know, at some point, I'd love to lure someone here who wants to be a vet in the community and that would certainly take away that travel time and the cost for us. But right now, oftentimes there's not a vet to do some of the things up here we wish.
Has Dr. Lenamire tried to find a successor? I, I think he has. I think it's a rhetorical question, but that's been unsuccessful, right?
Yes. Um, we're currently trying to work together to contact CSU and see if anybody would be interested in the summers, um, in between terms to come out here and work at his clinic as well as help out the animal shelter.
All right, thank you.
No, I'm just gonna, gonna reiterate for Kate Monet, it's time to stand well back of the sexy health issues this year. But we are holding off. Land Petting let goes holding off on scheduling the spay neuter on a furniture this time. Just wait and see where these impact will be for that. And we're looking at other options as well.
I mean.
Understanding that essential service.
Part of it also for him is his wife's health. And so it's very difficult and he's uh, he's ready to be retired. So, okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Next up, fire department.
Good evening, everybody. Start with a few accomplishments that we're able to complete in twenty twenty three or they will be complete by the end of the year. Uh, ISO classification, as we know, uh, because of the new station, some people are able to get better insurance from the block road lines. Uh, the tech community trained in the service, we've done three appointments. It's been a great asset for our community at this point. And it'll continue to be. Type one Spartan uh, will be in service hopefully by November. Uh, station two, you have the certificate of occupancy. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done down there. But we hope to have that and we will have our opening on April fourteenth. Uh, three resident firefighters are living currently at station two. We were spending twenty-four thousand annually on renting housing and uh, we spent roughly about one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars in that total program um, up to this point of, of housing them currently right now. So station one and station two will be able to organize both of our facilities and of, of our mess that we have. Um, and we're able to spread our wings a little bit and be able to get organized as a organization. So I'm looking forward to that. And uh, that's good for my O C D. Um, the uh, twenty twenty-three Colorado Mountain College Fire Academy graduation will happen in December. Uh, we replaced fifteen sets of bunker gear for about sixty thousand dollars on a cheap grant. We received two B K radios on V H F, uh, or V H F radios, uh, in amount of ten thousand dollars. That was uh, through uh, B F A that supports a wildland communications. We did grant funding for the staffing at our emergency response, uh, total of one hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars roughly for supporting the fourth firefighter to meet our N F P A seventeen ten seven twenty standards. Uh, two firefighter personnel graduated with their associate's degree in fire science technology. Headwash Training Center, we added burn room on the third division. Utilizing the six thousand dollars to be at an I G A with C and C with. For now, I'm building that out also being able to do a search pop as well and use it for other disposable items. Uh, so the use agreement for station two is coming. We do uh, work on that today. So that should be finalized here pretty quick. And then we have a whole list of certifications. And if you can see there, there is a tremendous amount of training that we put into our organization for the best kind of quality and special response that we can have for our community. These are just some of the certifications that, that uh, some of our personnel receive this year. And then every year we have uh, recertification process uh, for every individual. Cause it's out every three years, every two years, depending on when that's the certification expires. There's a certain kind of job performance requirements that you have to do in order to be able to keep those certifications. So number goal, goal number one, what number one goal, um, and I'm sure it's everybody's goal here in Lake County, is our retention of our people. We put so much time and energy and effort into building these people up for the betterment of our community and then they go somewhere else. Now, we build a program within the fire agency to be able to replace our, at our firefighter level. That salary range is still not adequate enough to be able to retain those people. I would really like to be able to get their salaries, do some kind of invariability. I know the salary assessment's coming. And really dive into that and see what we can do about keeping our firefighter level, but mostly at our captain and our engineer level. By the time they get to an officer within the organization, they have had a tremendous amount of experience. They have a whole lot of stuff in their rolodex to be able to make decisions out there in accounts. And I think it's really important, it's detrimental to my organization when I lose somebody at an officer or engineer level. So uh, maybe hopefully when we get our discussions, we start talking about salaries, we can really discuss about what those salaries look like on a comparable level. Goal number two, we have a lot of programs within the organization, wildland fire response. Of course, we want to continue to grow that program, knowledge is for revenue that we receive to be able to not dip into general funds, both the city and the county, but also the kind of experience that they get out there is very, very important because then we're able to respond appropriately here from what they've learned out there. So that's great. One of the tax, uh, want to be able to invest in a new tax extension. That's next on our capital improvement plan. I just found out today that there is one in the queue and I'll talk to you more about that on Thursday at the management board meeting. It's not two fifty, two sixty. It's more like three thirty-one. Yeah. Yes, Mary. I was floored by that.
You're killing me, dude.
I know. Five million one point two. Oh, same. Anyways. Uh, mitigation efforts. I don't think Commissioner much today that our record is actually hiring a uh, a wildland mitigation specialist. So we're gonna try to incorporate that and how does that look for Lake County? And what kind of support can we do that within the operational budget? How does the county support that? Does the city support that for those collaborative efforts on maybe that's more of a fire-wise community and how we, you know, coordinate all of those efforts uh, moving forward. So I'm really looking forward to that and I'm excited about that. That was good news. Our apparatus, of course, we're gonna look at what, what is an E V T versus a vehicle technician look like in the future? Because our apparatus currently goes over fleets over Keystone, we're down in Denver. Can somebody locally do that and how do we support their success? Uh, we have uh, truck one. I'm gonna look in twenty twenty four on what is refurbishment look like for truck one. Not a replacement. That's gonna be, you know, close to two million dollars. We don't need that. We can get a used piece of equipment, but I'm gonna look at also the refurbishment aspect of that. But that'll probably be a twenty-five.
And did you explain the truck one is the ladder truck?
Ladder truck. It's been a hundred and five foot six. The engine, engine six or three is the one we're discussing about type six in the management board meeting. Rescue equipment is a big one. A lot of our. Rescue equipment is a big one. A lot of our rescue equipment over the years have just, it's just gotten old and used um, on over the red rescues, and we have to stay up on that kind of training. So we use it for training all the time because if you don't, if you don't use it, you lose it. That's the, that's one of those um, valuable things that we need to do in our training. And a lot of that equipment is um, very old and it needs to be replaced. So I'm going to be asking for um, uh, uh, that and for thermal imaging cameras, you know, in an amount of about twenty-five thousand. If you remember, we put twenty-five thousand for equipment in the budget last year for equipment replacement. And I'd like to be able to use that funding moving forward. We'll have further discussions about that. Health and wellness, very, very important. We do fifteen eighty-two physicals every year. I'd like to be able to add our resident reserves if possible. That's going to be an increase, and we could talk about that. It's roughly about fourteen thousand versus nine. Um, on that, I think it's very important to take care of the people that are exposed to certain things and elements that uh, we need to catch and have a little bit of protection on. Personal protective equipment. Because of the fifteen sets that we received of about uh, sixty thousand dollars this year, I'd like to be able to utilize that funding and get what's called a dual-purpose gear. Um, and, and that'll create longevity in actual P P E, the bunker gear that we wear. Normally, we wear our bunker gear in a lot of, a, a, a lot of um, emergencies out there, medicals, rescues, everything. And um, if we can get a, a different kind of P P E that will protect us from blood, blood more pathogens and also like auto extrication and possibly wildland bars, et cetera. I can stop utilizing the most expensive gear and go with those types of sets. I'd like to be able to do that. Thank you, Mayor. Add uh, small engines, a lot of stuff is overworked equipment, uh, snow blowers, weed whackers, lawn mowers, that kind of thing. Hammer one hazmat, uh, hammer one in Aaron Lightcard, that is owned by the South Central Region. And we're going to relinquish that uh, that equipment back to them. So we got to figure out what does our, uh, what is our hazmat capabilities for Lake County? Uh, and what is that going to look like? So we may have to go from nineteen hundred to five thousand in that line item for a year until we can create our actual response capabilities for our hazmat as we make that transition. And uh, we have facilities, you know, Station Two, um, we want to make sure that we get service for that and have great response capabilities. Station One, we have a lot of maintenance, of course, it's an old facility. You'll see an increase in that because we have some sheet off work that needs to be done in the bays. And I would like to work with the county on the long-range plans which facilitate maintenance. Department standard operating procedures, we hope to do that. Get those up in money, apparatus, uh, consultant uh, to come in and analyze our fleet for a capital plan of maintenance, hire a full-time industry staff member for the organization. That's very important as well. Uh, that is absolutely needed in these times currently right now. I've, I've bear that uh, burden and that, and that weight up until now, and I, I, I just need some help. Uh, so I'm looking forward to that discussion. I T A, I need to update them with the county, the C and C, uh, hospital, I need to update all my I T As, so I'm hoping to accomplish seven twenty-four. And then hire a full-time wildland fire specialist, and I talked about that a little bit. Training, get some stuff down at H T C, out at the training facility. I'd like to be able to get some infrastructure put in there for a primary control building. I'll be working the C and C with that. And see what we can do to move that program forward, the entire fire assistance program. Uh, continue, continue to build up training centers. Uh, have a sign-in on you for everybody's use out there. Have personnel uh, learn the positions above them, they get certified. And uh, make sure that they can bump up in that next position uh, while they're um, doing their task posts and getting trained properly. And then she will have some goals that he'd like to be overall, he'd like to get a thousand dollars for CO detectors. We already do a smoke detector campaign through Red Cross, and we want to supplement that with CO detectors because I think it's really important that those two go together for life-saving purposes. You know, CO is a, a solid kicker up there. So we want that. Uh, Buller extinguisher, she's going to try to get a grant, it's about twelve thousand dollars. He'll go to N F A classes. He wants to go to Portland testimony training through F Mac uh, to be able to represent the city and county properly in court law. And he wants to choose a department member to start training them in inspections and code enforcement, so we can create the depth.
Not bad. I have a question for that.
I know it's fast, it's written a lot, so.
It's good, that's a lot. I, I have a question. Are you working with Lexible right now on the SOPs, right?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that that, that's in process, so right?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
About eight months now.
That's what I thought.
Really tasked uh, to try to give it out to people.
So that you'll see then in the fire department budget and then separately in the city hall budget line items for the Lexible, under Lexible costs. So it, it does cost us every year to maintain that.
And the streets department's been using it for years, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Any other quick, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would your administrative staff member work on grants or is that you do all the grant?
I, I do, no, so. Yes, I would like to train them in, now I don't mind writing the grants. I think that's the fun part. Uh, the submission, I have, I have a part-time person who I, who I help, who helps me, like with the submission of the, the grant and and all that kind of stuff, but then the management of the grant. The after, the after.
All the reporting and.
Importing, the financials, all of that. That's what I'd like to be able to train that.
Yeah, some of those grants are federal, which means they're, they're more onerous.
They are, two of them are, yeah. The state grant, the state grants, they're about sixty-four, five, I go out there every year. They're, they're, they're pretty. More simple.
This is just for my own identification. What's an over-the-edge rescue?
So somebody goes uh, off a cliff.
Oh, just exactly what it says, okay. Got it.
We only did that once or twice during the city council meeting.
That's why I was to say firmly suited.
Any other questions for, sorry, pardon.
Specifically for the CO detectors, um, when you guys get those in place, I'd love to know that as part of um, C four, we have seen a lot of people kind of ask those safety questions regarding uh, you know, their home safety. So as soon as that gets in place, I would love to know, just to be able to follow with it. Okay, yeah, that's great. I, I, I'm very happy if you want to like put that with the CO detectors. Um, it's, it's a real thing.
I would say they have those combo detectors, but I've learned that that's a really bad idea. Smoke detectors need to be up high, CO detectors need to be down low, so it doesn't make any sense to have a combination detector.
There's a, there's talk of that for sure.
All right.
I've got one, one more. You talked about your first goal being retention of firefighters. Fully appreciate that and the need to look at salary ranges. And it seems like a lot of your other goals, just in terms of having updated equipment and providing training, also go towards helping with retention. Is there anything else that you can think of that would help to strengthen our fire department in that way, particularly with respect to retention? Or do you think it's covered here? It might, and it might be covered here.
Well, um, you know, I, I think culture has a lot, lot to do with it. Retention is um, if we, I mean, our, our culture is pretty good for our department, but it only you know, that against us so much. You know, it's after a while, you know, um, we bring these people in from the fire academy, we put them in our system, you know, in our, in our program. And we, we um, teach them to become, to become professional firefighters. We retain them for about two to three years. And what, what's uh, more um, attractive to them, although they pay the grass at the other side, is obviously the day. Um, they love it here, rather than here. Of course, you know, I always hear when they go somewhere else, they're always complimenting about how they miss it and wish they wouldn't have never left, but it's always a um, you know, as you grow as an individual, I think, and you get more established. You know, you have greater um, bills to pay. You're trying to create a family, which costs more. And there's just this um, it's, it's that constant battle of being able to try to take care of the needs on a personal level from the, you know, from the profession. So I think it boils down to a lot of the pay because they, they see it as very attractive. Um, you know, I gave an example in the management board meeting, you know, uh, is that we lost a captain and maybe uh, eighty roughly here, and he went over eighty-two over there at injured level. And then three months from then, he was going to be, you know, eighty minutes, right? And, and that could be, you know, a sit-backwards firefighter, you know, rather over there with no lumps in your back and the responsibility of, you know, taking care of your crew and the emergency that you have, that you have to do, the responsibilities day in, day out. So that was a little valuable then. So.
That makes sense. So you haven't heard anything specifically about housing, for example, or childcare? It has more to do with just absolute salary level.
It, it does.
Okay.
To manage the salary.
All right, thanks.
Dan, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time, Matt.
Uh, next we have human resources.
Good evening, everyone. Some human resources goals for twenty twenty-four. I have six listed. The first one is provide better clarity on employee rules of conduct, policies or procedures. Complete the update of the employee handbook with Lexible. Obtain senior council approval for the handbook and roll out the right handbook to the employees. It seems like it's going to be very thorough from what we've been in our meetings every week with. Very thorough things that I, I didn't think of. How about you?
No, it's, it's, it's fantastic. Lexible has gathered together, you know, legal requirements and best practices. And absolutely, they have thought of things that we have not thought of. We just finished the section on volunteers. And we've had people volunteer to help the city. Streets Department had somebody, you know, and the parameters on volunteers, we never even considered that, so. So it's going to be thorough. I agree.
Um, my second one is obtain lower SIRS insurance premiums. Most of me know this year, I thought it was going to be this year's audit, and it's next year, so I think we are going to be ready for the audit next year. Um, I want to have everything completed on the SIRS audit before December so that when he comes in twenty twenty-four, then we will get lower insurance premiums and.
I agree.
Yes. Um, continue to seek out opportunities to reduce the city's safety vulnerabilities.
Can you talk about that one a little bit more? Is that what this safety concerns have been made, raised most recently with the court taking place and people not feeling safe in the building, or is that something else?
One of the things I think we were talking about when we saw that was uh, the installation of smoke detectors. So as part of the SIRS audit, uh, I can't remember if it was identifying or we, we volunteered, oh, actually, it was uh, our own fire marshal looked at the building and realized that City Hall doesn't have any smoke detectors. So that's a vulnerability, looking at those vulnerabilities and identifying those and having the fire marshals. There's a number of those that we still need to check off the list. Uh, there are some materials that are being stored in the attic that are too heavy to be stored in the attic, such as the old slate that came off the roof. Um, so the, uh, there's some recommendations on that list that we're working on, on checking off. So rather than to, you know, put all those, uh, though, that may not be the entirety of the list of things that our fire marshal comes back and identifies some things, but those are the ones that come out um, to my brain now.
As part of your considerations, uh, you don't have, you have SIRS in every night with this cop. Pentagon, is our plan to try and reduce uh, workers' comp exposure or the pricing, which is very high?
Yeah, I would say, you know, we've been, we've been lucky uh, since uh, we, we have very, I mean, part of that, frankly, is uh, doing the things on the SIRS audit. So Erin has done a fabulous job of making sure that our folks in the streets department, some of our folks who are exposed to, you know, um, environmental dangers are properly trained. So we have had, I think, as far as I've seen in employer, very few, and I hope I don't jinx us, very few on-the-job injuries. You know, the ones we've had have been, you know, ones where someone hurt their back, and sometimes that's not necessarily improper lifting or whatever, it's just sometimes the nature of the work. So I think workers' comp, we have not had an issue of abuse or concern of a lot of employees. We do have labor-intensive departments. So if you look at police, fire, streets, those are labor-intensive, and I, I think the key to that is the training that Erin has been and we're beginning to making sure all the departments have done on workplace safety. But I also think one of the other things we could maybe consider doing is um, uh, you know, maybe doing like a, a safety video, sending it out to Leadville full-time, Leadville part-time on, you know, I was, worked somewhere before where it was like it's icy slippery season, you know, that's not, it's not a joke. I think, you know, everyone can attest that slipping on some ice is a real issue here. And just maybe even limiting exposure on some of those things and saying, sending out a safety video here and there.
Come on, thank you.
My third one is continue to ensure that, that employees are receiving the necessary training to complete their jobs, ensure safety and ensure legal compliance. Um, ensure that employees are properly trained on appropriate workplace conducted procedures, which is the online training that everyone has done. And keeping track of which ones need to be done every six months, which ones need to be done every two years, and getting those completed in the correct timeframe. Um, ensure that supervisor, supervisors receive proper training on their supervisory responsibilities. I need to go to one or two classes. Right, in.
A lot of family tests.
Yeah. Um, uh, number four is ensure successful rollout of the state family program within the city. Encourage employees to opt-in the program and certain free questions. I want to send out an email to everyone so that when we have our December fifth meeting with all the employees that uh, we can have questions answered before that meeting for them. Uh, work with the finance department to ensure the successful, successful implementation of the family program. Well, that's what, goal is continue to enhance employees' work experiences. Some of my ideas are maybe a drawing every other week throughout twenty twenty-four with all the employees, each drawing could have a gift card to a local business. Not letting an employee win the drawing more than once. Um, a summer barbecue, team billing that each department can participate in each month or every other month. Something that would be no more than one hour or to do during a meeting that they're having in their department. And my sixth goal is continue to enhance my own skills and development. Continue to receive legal and policy updates that affect city personnel, roles, policies and procedures. And continue to attend human resources training, including those regarding the Family Leave Act. Um, Americans with disabilities, I was able to go down to Loveland in August for a two-day, for a couple seminars. I've done it for two days, and it was very um, interesting with all the stuff that I got to learn there also. Those were my goals.
Excellent. Any questions for Erin?
I'd like to ask about thinking about employee retention. We've heard from the fire department how important it is to look at the salaries. And I, I think Lori, have you been looking at salaries for city employees? It seems like maybe I've seen something about that, and maybe I haven't.
Mm-hmm. So that's, yes, and that is part of what you're going to see for our budget process is uh, we wanted to have a salary assessment, and Erin worked really closely with Liam Burgess, and we have a salary assessment. It is uh, by the same company that did the SLIDA assessment, which we used very much last year to try and, you know, look at what are our salaries in the rate ballpark. So we'll be presenting that to you, or I can present that to you at the next city council meeting when you talk about it. I think it's um, uh, Karen warned us that it's going to be uh, eye-copping at some level because we've had some positions that have just been underpaid for a long time. So I don't expect that we will be able to achieve, you know, in everything that the, you know, the report identifies, but we should start towards it. Because I do think, you know, we're, we're at a place where we have openings, and I think our pay isn't competitive enough in some of our positions. Uh, I've worked with the animal shelter. You know, I think it's, it's tough when you're operating a position at fifteen dollars an hour. It's, it's just, if you look at the newspaper, positions are twenty dollars an hour right now.
Yeah.
So we just need to be, you know, it's great to create these vacancies, but if we can't fill them, it's. it's not good. It doesn't do us any good.
Chris, you have anything? Okay, Erin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You you are, as all the others, thanked and excused if you'd like. When the mayor said we were moving, I wanted to say his paper offer house up in the agenda because Sarah had to go home with the implication that none of us ever have to get home. We never get to go home.
Well, maybe it should have been over by an hour ago. What do you think? Okay, Main Street.
Um, good evening. Uh, I'm Nancy Bailey, Director of the Leadville Main Street Program. Uh, before we get into uh our goal, we're going to go over I'm gonna refer as a note. Um, I do want to point out a couple of things. Um, I'm so incredibly proud of the progress that the Leadville Main Street Program has made in the last three years. Um you know, for about seven years, uh the Leadville Main Street Program has continued to deliver on its mission, uh which has really centered around our four-point approach, which includes historic preservation, economic vitality, uh organization and promotion. Um, about three years ago, uh Chad, right now. Um, I was approached by Chad with the idea of taking over the Main Street Program. And and you know, at the time, I've seen many ups and downs and transitions with management. Um, and you know, most of us in the room are familiar with the, you know, the efficacy of a nonprofit is really consistently, right? And so we haven't had that. So since twenty twenty, uh in twenty twenty-one officially, you know, we brought in over half a million dollars uh in grant resources and thought improvement grants, C dot grants. You know, being an accredited national and state um Main Street community really affords us these important resources that we otherwise wouldn't see. Um, they've always been available to us. We just needed a consistent Main Street program to say we deserve the investment as well. And they they all agree. So it's just a matter of getting it out in the room today, just having the capacity, right, and the staff allocated and the proper funding um so that you have, uh you know, proper leadership uh in that. So um couple of things. I mean, most of you are, speaks for itself. Um, in twenty twenty, we have one signature event and we have eight. Um, last year we had one point five, one full-time person and one half-time person running uh the program. Uh, we have added another signature event and this is probably done by me, which is a part-time person. So I'm going to go through some programmatic goals that were identified for our strategic plan, which, by the way, Main Street had never done meeting with. So this year, um we accomplished that. And in addition to that, have a very detailed annual work plan. My goal and passion is that I I know, you know, I'm not going to be the Main Street manager forever. And I'm passionate about making sure this program stays intact while I'm gone because I'm a business owner and I found I'm not going anywhere. Um, and it's a really important program. Uh, and I I hope that, you know, um as you, and you guys have been unwavering, and the mayor is literally, if not but for Mayor Lobby and Sarah, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be standing. And we would have been out many resources um that are otherwise. I feel like we're in attitude. Um, and we've we've delivered on all of our annual programs. If you go through that, I can report and I will bore everybody because I do want to kind of hone in on some of our twenty twenty-four goals. But luckily, um we did go through a a a, I mean, a very laborious process from January all the way until March, the very first quarter. As you know, we transitioned out of the EDC, another fourth transition in a seven-year-old program, which is just an abomination. So I mean, I really need this consistency and the commitment to the program. And I think part of our responsibility as a Main Street program is really demonstrating our value to you all. Right? Um, and I feel like we've we've done that. And and it is our goal to continue to improve. Okay, but I do feel like we've we've really come a long way. Um, our annual activities um will continue in twenty twenty-four. Um, all the things that we've laid out, it's taken three years to build from one event to eight signature events that doesn't include technical assistance, grant writing, uh grant assistance. Uh, it doesn't include flower boxes. It doesn't include, you know, uh a lot of other things that the Main Street program is constantly working on, including communications. Uh, and uh, you know, those things. We are technically a nonprofit organization under the Lake County Community Fund. Um, and in that, we have a hundred percent core participation in our monthly meetings and how for the three years that I've been a learner. Um, and uh and we freshened up our mission statement this year and uh we've kind of done all the heavy lifting. And now it's our job to kind of shepherd and steward this three-year strategic plan that um is attached to actual uh measurable goals um in in that plan, which we have included in the report there. Um, so that's enough about kind of giving the overview about where we come from. But you know, what we're asking today is just your continued commitment. Um and again, I can't emphasize this enough. Being a part of this program and continue to support this program really affords us to protect our health and decency and protect this heritage that we have a responsibility to. And we're proud that we have a better connectivity with our historic preservation commission. Uh, for those who don't know, I am an alternate commissioner. Um, and I do love the partnership and connectivity because we actually do better when we're working together, and that's demonstrated time and time again. Um now, folks, of course, I'm going to, uh, we'll start by, you know, as you're getting your budgets together, and I know that there's some economic development funds that's being discussed in lobby, but I do want to point one thing out. You know, we are the only group doing any type of meaningful economic development actually on Main Street. So um, you know, and we need to uh, we need to continue um with this effort because, I mean, just in the last year, you know, I've been involved in three pretty significant uh historic preservation projects, like one one five U fifth, like six one six Harrison, that's in the process of going through the history Colorado and the organization, assistance from our historic architect with the Colorado Main Street Program.
Would you tell us which building that is?
That's a patent block. Uh, that is one of the last remaining historic structures. Um, that is, if not but for a unicorn, we'd be in real trouble. And luckily, we have someone that understands the investment and understands historic preservation. Um, and is is uh and I act as his liaison essentially. You know, like I said, there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes. Um, a lot of relationship building and, you know, just a lot of that, understanding the needs of these building owners that, you know, that think they know how much, but really, you know, so our partners at the Colorado Main Street and all of you all in the room, HBC has been a wonderful partnership this year. I I see a lot of core progress, and I'm really proud of that. Um, I I mean, I can go through each one of our goals here that's identified in our strategic plan, and it really is, you know, showcasing one manageable project, which we feel like the C dot grant was is worth five years worth of projects. Um but we will identify one for twenty twenty-four. We have several on the work plan, and you can all reference that and see what kind of ideas we have. Um, it's just a matter of the board to decide what that looks like. Uh, create organizational sustainability and support program expansion. We have completely done that by filling out uh and rolling out complete uh board directors, which we haven't had in in years prior to twenty twenty-one. Um, third goal, maximize community involvement. Um, and activate, well, I'm ad libbing, but uh maximize community involvement. I think we've done that by partnering with the Lake County Recreation Department, which retreats street, show them all Saturday with our music events. Um, I think that we have, and will continue to to hone in on those of those efforts. Um, and the fourth goal, obviously, is behind the scenes work of supporting the preservation projects and really being educated on what those resources are and kind of how to how to help uh the businesses navigate and building them to navigate these these important resources. Um you know, the one thing, the one takeaway, um in addition to, and I feel like this is, you know, Main Street's never been in a better place. And we have demonstrated that this really is a, it it could be a very meaningful, full-time job for someone. And currently, um, you know, the program, and I heard uh many departments, and I'm sure more after me, where, you know, it's the capacity versus salary. Right? So let's say, you know, I'm I'm very passionate about my succession plan because I want this to be a successful program as I'm doing business. You know, hopefully on the avenue one day. So we really need to bolster that salary um from thirty-five thousand up to, you know, double that. Um, hopefully, uh, we have, you know, and the one thing I want to add is, you know, what has Main Street done, you know, over the last three years to increase their own uh fundraising efforts? And I'm proud to say that our our fundraising efforts were worth three times more than we than we did in twenty twenty. And that's by way of better option fundraising, better planner box fundraising, better fundraising at music events and things like that without having to hand out too much to the business community. So I'm really proud of that. That shows our commitment, that we are invested uh as a board um in in the uh in the program. Um the third goal that we have for twenty point or the additional goal.
Yeah, you have about a minute.
Okay, I'm wrapping up. Perfect. Is that we will pursue another elevation uh in the Colorado Main Street Program. Uh, we thought that would happen in twenty twenty-three, um with the limited capacity of a part-time person. Um, that didn't happen, and it's okay because we actually wanted to launch our website before we did. We wanted to have a couple of things under our belt um before that happened. So that would be another goal. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
There's thirty seconds left. That was near the minute.
I I I do want to say this is a first-rate presentation. Uh, and it really clearly uh illuminates what Main Street has done in twenty thirty-three. And and I think, you know, I feel about Main Street, I think it may be the single most important thing we've done for our downtown corridor businesses um of of anything that that we've we've accomplished as a community. And you've taken it to a level that we started out with a flower program and community cleanup. That was it. You know, let's say four years ago. And now now here here we are, and it's uh it's amazing, and it's huge.
And I'd like to point out, last year, your Main Street auction raised ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So I, you know, like that that shows the commitment of you and your board to you know, and and when people come visit Leadville, they just notice that it looks great and looks cute. They don't notice the absence of trash and the presence of the flower boxes. They just think, oh, you know, Leadville looks great. So thank you, Lori.
And I do, and I do want to say, although I'm not, we're not a technical department, you know, I, I mean, the the hand-to-hand partnership that I have with the street department and all you guys, I mean, it it it's what makes us. Really. And you know, I I just, I really appreciate that.
You also have a very strong board, very involved. Any questions?
Can you, I I'm just curious to hear you talk a little bit more about your grant writing. We heard the city interest in hiring a half-time grant writer. The fire department's interested in an admin person to help with grant writing. And my sense is that you've done a lot of that just as a half-time person on top of everything else that you've done. So can you talk a little bit about the grants that you've brought to the community?
Yes, I can. Um, so you know, for those of you who don't know, I have a pretty extensive background in the nonprofit uh community. Kind of worked for uh national nonprofits. I've worked writing on development nonprofits, charity nonprofits, and I've done a fair amount of fundraising and grant writing. Uh, I'm I'm not a professional grant writer. There's a reason why people go into business doing this. Uh, it's it's, we cannot be good at everything. Um, I just happened to know a little bit about a lot, so I can kind of touch my way through things. And I did bring um uh over two hundred thousand dollars uh from C dot um by way of the Main Street Open for Business, or I'm sorry, the Main Street for Finalization Grant. Uh, we wouldn't have qualified for that if we were not an accredited Main Street community. Um, there was about two hundred and fifty, I think, even a hundred grand more than that, that went to the Herald Democrat. That was to our Main Street Open for Business Grant. Um, I didn't specifically write that grant. That was a partnership with our Colorado Main Street um program. Um, I assisted um um I did in-depth grant writing assistance to um uh Mr. Bill Pomkowicz, four one one five U fifth and six one six Harrison. Um, I would act as a as a third set of, second set of eyes and guidance.
And what was the value of that grant ultimately, the one one five?
This one that he's, oh, one 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 five, I would say, well, um, the the investment, I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying he bought a lot of grant money for that.
Okay.
Uh, but the investment was probably over a quarter million dollars.
Okay.
Um, so, and that happened, and the other thing I do want to mention is something I haven't shared with y'all, and I feel like I should, maybe I will. Um, I during my, my next presentation to you guys is, I actually have um a worksheet that I provide us at quarterly, I gave store state partners, you know, being an accredited Colorado Main Street community means we have to be, you have to jump through hoops and you have to prove what you're doing by way of reporting. Um, and we do that. So I'm happy to share that. It has kind of an overview of kind of the capital investment that we we trip um as a Main Street community. But um those are both the other two, and I I have a couple more, but.
That'd be nice to see.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nancy.
Any other questions? Nancy, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your commitment to historic preservation.
Next up, the vice board.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, sun, sun. Um, I submitted a, I mean, another kind of outline of our accomplishments and stuff over the last year, the goals and challenges along with our goals. I was pleased when Lori contacted me last week and asked if I would present today because it occurred to me that typically on the anniversary on the anniversary of my appointment, I come before the council and kind of give an update. I didn't do that this year in May because we were a whole lot to update for this year. But in anticipation of doing that for the process, it's been, it's it's amazing in front of you. Um, I'm not going to read the memo to you, but there's some things I just wanted to highlight about it. You know, we continue to operate in what I think is productive fashion for what we have to work with essentially. Um, you know, we offer the opportunity for folks to appear virtually, and even they need that, although the majority of the folks who um are summoned to court and actually appear still appear in person. Um, and it's going to get here. Uh, also, we try to be as flexible as possible to accommodate the city's law enforcement and prosecutor schedules by adjusting our court dates when necessary for that. Um, resulting recently in a change for our monthly docket date to the third Wednesday at one o'clock, which we probably, we haven't done yet, need to update on the website as well. Uh, we hope this is going to alleviate some of the burden of having resources available for court appearances, especially when there's been short staff in the police department. Um, which, you know, obviously, I I'm concerned maybe influencing the uh number of summons that have been issued for municipal court violations this year, they've remained very low. Um, and also we've had some issues with summons being issued correctly, which um when summons are detected, that often results in new dismissals of cases or uh fee agreements by the prosecutor in an effort to give it, if you can, something out of that case. And and I think it's probably a reflection of Chief Chavez has done a great job of recruiting folks, but a lot of them are relatively new or don't have expansive experience. And a lot of that experience goes into the proper way of writing tickets and incident reports and stuff like that. And I've talked with them and will continue to talk with them to see how we can be helpful with that. Um, but this has resulted in a number of fee agreements and stuff being entered into, and I've heard some grownlings by the police officers that they're a little frustrated at the notion that some of the tickets that they write end up being let out on lesser charges and stuff, which isn't a big incentive for them to continue to write um tickets that they feel reflect the offenses noted. Recently, y'all probably have seen, or at least some of you have seen, some concerns uh evidence about court security. Obviously, we know we're in a historic building and, you know, there is very little opportunity in court. You know, immediate uh security and even of an issue. We haven't had an issue with that in the municipal court so far, but um i- it's in hindsight, it's probably good for us to consider more effort towards that. Um, especially when we know that we have folks appearing before the court either on charges related to violence or who have a history of violent behavior as well. And so I'm communicating with um Chief Chavez and that as well, and I appreciate um Mayor Lori intervening on on that too, because my number one priority is to make sure that that our staff and constituents are there, are part of it. Another thing that continues to be a challenge is finding interpreters in municipal court. Um, the biggest challenge that we have with that is we often don't know when an interpreter is going to meet them until the day of the audit. And that pains me personally because I hated the thought of folks appearing before, needing language access services, and we have to continue their case because there is no resource available. Um, and unfortunately, because of the number, the small number of cases that have been filed that are coming into court, I don't think it's cost effective to try to have somebody onsite to serve as an interpreter with the resources we have available. Right now, if we can get um one of the virtual interpreters to appear, that costs forty-five dollars an hour. Um, the Lake County courts typically have first dibs on that. They have a docket at the same time as mine. And so that service is often not available, which means that our default is to the language line solutions, which is very expensive at five dollars per minute. So we are trying to uh avoid using that unless there is no other option. I've been in communication with the Congress Supreme Court. So we are trying to uh avoid using that unless there is no other option. I've been in communication with the Colorado Supreme Court Justice. Um Brian Rode right about the language access services that the state provides to all the state courts. And while he agrees that it's essential for our courts to have those services as well, we haven't made much progress towards opening those services up where we in school courts.
I have a question on that specifically. I know it is a legal requirement for. Uh municipalities. So for City Council, if it is requested for us to have interpretation, we legally have to require. Uh have that interpretation for them. Does that same standard hold for the courts?
Absolutely. And that's why when when someone appears who has any, it might not be the defendant. It might be if there's juvenile, their guardian who comes with them that that is non-English speaking. In those instances, protect their rights. We do not proceed with anything.
Okay, so you don't proceed. Okay, I just misunderstood that part. Gotcha.
We don't. We we inform them the best that we can that we're continuing their case and ensure that there is an interpreter available the next time. In the past, we've had some benefit of staff members where we communicate with them at that time, but even then, just having staff members, we don't proceed with just a staff member.
And that interpreter needs to be certified.
Not necessarily. You know, one of the interesting things about it is the municipal courts are not subject to the same rules for language access as the state courts because of their specific program. That has been set up. So technically, they don't have, we don't talk about that a little bit more in my goal as we go in into those about language access. But. The desire is to have certified one because the municipal court is a court of record, which means if there's an issue with the proceeding, then it is um the the appeal is to the district court. And so they would not make sure we do that. We can protect their rights at the municipal court level. So if there is an appeal, that is one of the basis for appeal.
Is the online interpretation, court interpretation effective?
It's very difficult. Um no, because online, it's typically iPhone. And so you've got someone.
No, like you could you could zoom in or get on a computer.
Exactly. And then there also the challenge with that is if they want to talk to the prosecutor about it, it's in short favor. I mean, it's not outside of presence of court. And so you've got that exchange first and how to complete that. It's not very effective. So that's why we're working on other options.
Thank you.
Um super quick, because I I know I want to be perspective there by sun. Um Hensher, my beloved uh court clerk over there. Uh she does do dou- double duties as deputy city clerk and 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 my municipal court clerk. And I think she is happy in her role that she plays with those. But it's my impression, she has not complained. I want to make sure, no, she didn't. She hasn't complained. I'm not complaining about her performance, but the impression I get is that her city clerk duties are rather demanding, which means that. The allocation of the time for municipal court work is probably somewhat limited um beyond just the routine duties to make sure to dock it. And so the court is um. Is, you know, available in time and manner. So I put him on memo, then a little bit concerned is her ability to juggle both positions long-term, but. That's based in a perception that I don't know fully what all the scope of her duties are as the the deputy city clerk, but. I'd like to see her be able to do more of what the municipal court. There are things that we don't have the capacity to do right now, especially with. Uh collecting on fines and, you know, uh bringing things up, alternate procedures and stuff in the court to make sure everything, you know, stays in line. So. That's just something I'm putting out there. I'd like to have the opportunity to kind of look at that a little closer and see, you know, my budget is based on, I believe, ten hours a week for the municipal court.
It is.
I don't know for certain if she's spending ten hours a week. And right now, what makes it even more challenging is that i- in a way is we're lucky. That we don't have a very heavy caseload right now. If we had the normal caseload that we had in my first couple of years as the judge. I don't, her eyes will be spent. I don't know how she'd handle the volume of those cases and the deputy city clerk stuff. If it gets to the point where things start to ramp up, that's why I'm kind of running it to y'all's attention now, so that we're not. All of a sudden trying to catch up and and make that pivot to get the resources. Um talking about caseload, I put in my memo, you know, previously, we averaged twenty-plus cases a month coming into municipal court. I'm going to recount it. We've only had a total for the first eighteen months, a year of twenty-five in case. That's it. Didn't involve it to the court. Um I know that uh the biggest production's been in traffic matters. I get name threatened. There's very little traffic enforcement going on um within the city of Ludville, we spot the city PD. I know that Chief Chavez has worked diligently to rebuild staff for the police department, but it doesn't appear that that has resulted in a higher level of municipal code enforcement. One thing that concerns me too is I I look at when the the month of the course, I look at it to see how things are trending. And I noticed last month that only six tickets were written. Three of them, so half of them were written in the county court limit three year. And I'm trying to impress upon them that if it's a violation that qualifies to come into municipal court, it's to their benefit to write in municipal court. Because that way, the money, the the surcharge and stuff stays in the city to go towards their training and that type of thing. So. It doesn't make a lot of sense to be writing tickets to go into the county court. And I expect the county court would prefer we get them because they have a big enough docket on their own. We're also challenged with a high rate of failure to appear on municipal court summons. And I think part of the reason for that is uh the state legislature changed the the law in regards to, especially for tra- traffic offenses. To where enforcement of those, when somebody doesn't appear, really has their little T. It used to be someone failed to appear, you could. Issue an outstanding judgment warrants, send it to D and B, and they would have to satisfy that judgment before they could get their driver's license. That has been changed. That's no longer the case. So really, our only option right now is we file the default judgment, it goes on the record. But it really doesn't mean anything to them because it doesn't have any enforcement capacity on that. So D and B is not going to enforce it. And there's not much that we can do there. The other issue we have for enforcement is for criminal offenses that aren't traffic-related. Um our option is to pretty much issue benchmarks. Which we do routinely. The challenge with that is that there, it seems like there's only the capacity with the level PD to enforce those marks. And when they do, there's also the notion that we have to to coordinate with the sheriff's office in terms of being able to bring someone in. If they can't immediately be brought into the courtroom to hold them in the county, holding cells there. Um. I don't think there's been a time when I've been called, regardless of day or night, on a benchmark, someone's been picked up, that I haven't said, no, be there, come and let's go, I'm bringing them. And we've had that happen. Um but then there are sometimes when they have chosen, if it's like in the middle of the night, not to make that call. And so they hold them. And if there's not space at the county facility to hold them, they just release their own PR bond. PR bonds aren't a real good incentive for people to then show up. So that's something we're kind of challenged with as well. One of the other resources we have, and I'd really like us to use more, is the option of using public service, which people figure this community service as part of the sentencing phase. You know, most people, most of those come into our court, whether it's through a plea agreement or being found guilty, you know, they're fined at an appropriate level, but. Most of them don't really have the resources to pay that fine, especially on the day they're they're charged. So. We end up, we pay a plan for something like that, but then often results in they're not paying. And then once again, that might be something if we could expand capacity. Or Hannah to be able to follow up on that, or to engage a collection service to be able to do that. Now, I don't like the idea of us turning it into a collection agency, because. I I would like to think that most of the time, folks aren't paying the tickets. They don't have the money. They have other requirements like food and rent and stuff that they need to pay instead. But it does kind of look at, you know, if you look at our our statistics and stuff, there's not a lot of being returned. I mean, I was very happy when I looked at financials last month that. Right now, like a hundred and twenty percent over on our court funds, but that is related to one case. That gives an animal forty case that we were. So I'd like to see us do more of the municipal public service stuff. Um I put a little bit in there about my continued professional development and activities with municipal court. I continue to serve as a member of the state board. Um for the Colorado Associate Municipal Judges Association and get a lot of value at that from that. That doesn't really cost the the city much in that way. Okay, well, quick, um shifting gears into uh goals and such. Um I I spoke with the Hensher and together, these are the goals that we would like to to aim for next year. One's for court security. Let's figure out how to provide this amount of loaded. I'm very sensitive though to the notion of not having an officer sit up there in municipal court. If nobody should, you know, to be, doesn't make sense. Nobody's showing up, or, you know, we don't really have the need. I I don't like it to be more cost-effective to try to do some sort of panic button, to install a panic button up there so that we do need security or something, if there's a duty officer. Anyway, for them to be available. But I'd like us to explore what we can do in terms of enhancing the availability. The notion of wanting people, it's my understanding, we don't actually own the wanted city, so we have to borrow that from the county to do it. So I I'm I'm willing to be creative and stuff. Again, my part is try to. Make sure that we protect court staff and and our constituents. Language access services, this is the one thing I'm actually really excited about. The county's Department of Urban Services. Recently, we're received a grant through Hiccup to support establishing an interpreter network. I've already talked to them about. Is that going to be something available beyond, you know, county services, it's an asset. So I intend to work again to see how we can be one of those. You know, users of that service um to to expand our language access with the data. And so we're working on that. Um and also we have a goal, and this is kind of a casual goal for me, is to continue improving the communication between. Um the municipal court, the police department, and the prosecutor. Um you know, often, and and I I think it's it's a stat appearance that sometimes. The information isn't there. There isn't sufficient communication between the PD and and the prosecutors with the information prepared for cases. And sometimes that means we have to be. Continued and such. I would like for us to help facilitate some of that as well. Um and then finally, you know, increasing in this capacity to look at, you know, what's just one of the ways. We can more efficiently approach the municipal court or to help with that. But I would like us to to be more efficient and effective. In the ways that that we approach things such as collection fines and restitution, especially the restitution toward, we're not even follow up with that. That's that's a disservice. Um finally, just, you know, I'm proud of the way, I mean, progress we've made with municipal court, but there's still a lot of work to be done to ensure that we have full state and every glass access for our constituents. As well as providing the quality of operations that I believe our constituents deserve. Happy to answer.
Do you have any questions for this court?
Okay, thank you. One of the things I wanted to just, it's not a question, but one of the things uh Councilmember Grant requested is that we do have a discussion in our next city council meeting about. Court security. And I would like to have that. We've had some discussions. Uh if you're available, you you and I can talk, but I I did want that to happen. Likely in the executive session, because I don't really want, you know, obviously our critical infrastructure to be, so to the extent we can, uh I I'd like to to. Talk about that some more. And the timing's good because it results in something that you need for your twenty twenty-four budget.
Exactly.
And I have some ideas on interpretation. Uh we can talk about that and have some more ideas on prosecution. So if you have time, just.
Happy to. You know, I try to stay in my lane. You know, the prosecutor is is engaged by the city. It's not through the municipal court. Um and the same, I I love working with the police department, Chief Chavez, he's done a phenomenal job with the resources he has and stuff. So. I'm happy to do what I can do to help with that.
You know how I feel about this. I know it, uh you you said it'd be pretty mundane, but I don't care. I think we should have an officer in the court. That's all. And and. And these are not not long court sessions, so.
Most of the time. Now, people start showing up and we start actually having trials and stuff. It might take a little longer, but my thought also too is since we don't have a huge crowd usually, maybe we could even put a little desk up there or a table or something where they can come up and do paperwork whenever soon there. I just, I just want to be happy.
That's a good idea. They could be doing reports, which is most of what they do anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next up, we have the planning department. Chape, you're up.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for letting me present virtually tonight from my conference hotel room. And uh and thank you for your time tonight. Um so, you know, as your as your city's planning director, uh the first city planning director, I do think it was a highly effective year of having a planning department for the first time. I think in general, uh you know, the this uh this last year was all about establishing a planning department, uh cleaning up a lot of things and trying to plan. Uh for some things in the future. Uh so I'll just recap uh this last year in more detail. Um I think, you know, the the main, sorry, starting off the wrong page here. Um the the, you know, the the main goal of the cus- of uh the planning department is provide customer service. I would say. Uh the majority, the bulk of what I do on on day in, day out, uh is answer questions. Uh people um call, people email. They have questions about what they can do with their property in the future. Um and even if those plans are for a day out, a week out, a month out, or a year out or more. Uh so, um you know, a big part of what we do every day is making sure that people have consistent information about how they, what the what they can do with their property. Um that may be a property they own, or they purchased, or or even a complaint about someone else's property. So in general, I think uh the first goal this past year of of customer service was mostly accomplished, but. It it is just me. And now that I am here, um a lot of people know that I am here, so they, you know, they call um and they have questions. And so. When I I when I, when enforcement, uh big enforcement issues come up, like the rail yard, for example, I do get pulled away. So I think in in general, uh we we. Um provide a good customer service to people who are calling. They were thankful they had someone to speak to. Um and but I I do think, you know, at at times when I do get pulled away. Um on enforcement issues, uh emails start getting backed up, voicemails start getting backed up. Um so I think it was most mostly accomplished, but um it it could be improved. Um people could. Um have someone um more readily available a hundred percent of the time to have those questions answered. But I think I think planning departments all over the all over the country, you know, s- struggle with, um you know, providing, um you know, tim- timely answers. To uh people's questions a hundred percent of the time. So I think mostly accomplished, but um there's definitely opportunity for improvement going into the next year in terms of customer service. Um in terms of construction compliance, you know, this um this is mostly the rail yard. Uh as the council knows, I've I've come to the council a lot about a rail yard compliance. Uh we've definitely been on it. Um there's a lot more work to do. Uh and then also, you know, I I think we've been doing a a good job of um kind of establishing um some basic requirements for um for kind of more infill development, one-off development. Uh and things like erosion control and construction management plans. Um and just making sure that when uh we're doing building permit review, that those plans are stamped with all the requirements so the contractors. Um have their job site plans that let them know everything they they need to do to stay in compliance. Uh there's more work to do uh in that next year um in terms of code updates, but I think this year was um was pretty good in terms of staying on top of the. The rail yards and uh and just the other infill development. Uh this past year was definitely a a a new uh staff member to um to Ludville, also a new member of the community. And so a a lot of um. I think this last last year was spent uh attending meetings and being a resource uh and and trying to form those relationships with. Uh our important community orgas- organizations. So whether it was the PAT or the Regional Housing Authority, also sit on the Development Subcommittee for the Regional Housing Authority. Um working with the design team uh for the Justice Center through numerous meetings. Um and then also kind of going uh for more recently and and definitely going for the the community center. So. I do feel like I've uh I've learned a lot of who's who in the community. Um and I feel like I I definitely have been able to be a resource for those when when they have questions that might be related to um pl- uh planning issues. In our big community projects, uh w- w- was the Justice Center uh in that, although that community uh Justice Center project is on hold currently, uh there was a lot of work that was happening. Uh last fall and ear- early this winter in terms of getting that that project to its preliminary public hearing. Uh I do think that. Well, uh there, you know, there were site issues that are outside of the really the control of the c- the county and the planning department. Uh related to access and those sorts of things that were kind of, there were some un- unfortunate issues that need to be resolved before that project can go uh to a final hearing. Um but we, I think we provided um uh if, you know, basically a, you know, a solid staff report and review of the application. We're able to work with the design team. To um get that project in front of its preliminary hearing um the best it it could, that it could be. And I think that was a um, I think that was a successful public hearing. Uh that was the the major community project that um was that we were working on last fall and this early this winter. Um or I'm sorry, ear- uh earlier this year. And then lastly, um and then and then I think the council should be very proud of this, a code update. So. So when I started last August, um there were three or four code um projects that were already in the works. Um so your your subdivision code um update that would allow for. Affordable housing projects to have an administrative uh subdivision plat- like for like townhomes. Uh your Table of Uses project, which was in the works for almost six years, it's a massive project. Um and and the historic district code amendments, which were in the works for a couple of years. Uh and so the council has passed all of those. Those code amendments are all effective now. Uh and some of those are just very important in terms of pro- uh protecting the community, um allowing for affordable housing to be constructed. Um so I think the council should should be proud of that. So we, so so I, you know, I I've worked with the city attorney on all of these. Um I think all of these um were were big projects, but they they went through. And then the one that's in the works right now that the the council is very aware of is the um the PAT recommendations, which are now called the Housing Variety Amendments, and we're continuing to 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 work on that and make progress. Um, so any any questions on uh twenty twenty three recap?
Nope.
All right, moving on. Twenty twenty four. Uh, so I have four goals this year. Um, it's because customer service and construction compliance uh and really supporting the community are um are are continuing forward within, and I have some um some action items that I would like to complete that are more specific for those goals. Uh, and then the new the new goal is is planning. Um, and I'll get to that. It's related to the comprehensive plan. So starting off with customer service. Uh, as I mentioned, I s- I do spend the majority of of my time um ans- answering what I call counter questions. Um, so I'm, you know, I'm I am the person answering the phone um and 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 answering those emails, but I do get I do get backed up. Uh, there, so there is an opportunity uh there for ju- just in terms of answering counter questions. Um, to if if we did have a an entry level planner position that could answer basic questions, like things like setbacks and minimum lot sizes and all those sorts of things. Um, that would, I think that would significantly improve customer service and, you know, at times when when we're two weeks behind on answering uh emails about people's properties, um, having someone to answer those those basic questions uh could free me up to work on some some larger projects like comprehensive plan, for example, uh, or, you know, or, you know, major development enforcement. Um, the, you know, the, and there's lots of opportunities for an entry level planning uh person position like a planner one or a planning technician uh to work on a lot of just housekeeping, uh, which you kind of see down. There's a lot of a lot of bullets. So um uh, you know, some of this is more administrative work that would necessarily would would not be inappropriate for a planning, an entry level planning person uh to do. Um, and some of these things actually help them um, you know, learn the processes uh and and be able to provide better customer service. Um, so I have this on there as a as a possibility for for twenty twenty four and bringing bringing um a an entry level planner position. Um, and and this could be someone with a, you know, with a bachelor's degree in planning, not even necessarily a master's degree in planning, or someone who's worked in a planning department before, maybe don't have, you know, the educational requirements or the experience re- uh requirements to be um a higher up position. Um, but still be able to perform some of those really basic services that I spend a lot of time right now and and free me up to work on some some bigger, more important tasks. Uh, so the uh the second one, and this is a big one, I I I'll probably spend most of my time uh talking about this. This is regarding building department services. So right now, as most of the council members are aware, the the city of Leadville has an IGA with Lake County for uh for Lake County to provide all building department services. And right now approximately forty percent of of permits uh that go through the Lake County Building Department are for city of Leadville properties. Uh, last year in twenty twenty two, uh, the permit fees that were um that were incurred were uh for approximately a hundred and fifty uh building permits within the city, uh totaled a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh, the county takes twenty five percent of that, so roughly their their portion is twenty eight thousand dollars, and then the city's portion is eighty four thousand dollars. So if you're just looking at the numbers uh that um and um in terms of whether you're bringing in an FTE, whether you were bringing in um where you were providing, just contracting out for for a consultant uh or some kind of hybrid approach with the county, there's a lot of possibilities there to be to be vetted. Um, but the numbers are there to definitely support a support a position. And so um I think, you know, there are, there's a lot of opportunity to increase efficiency when you have a building department in-house. A lot of cities do. I thi- I think um the a lot of, a lot of um cities have a community development department, which has both a planning and building division. Um, so realistically, in a in a perfect world, uh, what this could look like is um uh with me as the continuing to be the director, uh, but then having a um a both a planning and building uh position um that I could oversee and um and work i- in both divisions as needed. Um, this is a I think this is something that needs to be uh fully evaluated. I've I've met with the county on this um as recently as yesterday. And it will, uh, we will need to continue talking with the c- the county, meeting with the county um about pros and cons of of bringing a building department in um in-house with the city. Um, and then when I say pros and cons, I mean both for the city and the county. Um, a building, a building staff member that, you know, that could be someone who um s- serves as a chief building official, a plan reviewer and a building inspector. Um, that 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 position could um could um I guess v- vary between uh based on the need. Ideally, we'd have somebody with with all those qualifications. Um, but again, effi- efficiencies, there, I won't get into issues uh now, but there are, um, there are a lot of opportunities for improvements and efficiencies. Um, if that position was was in-house and I'll I'll get into perhaps more of that when we get into um and into budget. Uh, so I'm I'm just gonna.
You have, you have about a minute left.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, uh, construction compliance, uh, this is just continuing with with what we're already doing, and I would like to codify um so- some things in code about construction sites uh so that uh we're avoiding nuisances to adjacent property owners. Um, in terms of planning, uh, this is basically the comprehensive plan. Uh, I would like to be able to uh work in twenty twenty four uh and potentially with a consultant uh to um to adopt the uh prepare for adoption of the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan. A significant portion of this will be planning, but um but a good portion of this will be um will be other city departments. The the ci- uh, the state requires the comprehensive plan to be updated every ten years. The last comprehensive plan was adopted in twenty twenty five. I'm sorry, in twenty fifteen. Uh, and then and then uh we do have some historic preservation goals, which are the these things are already in the works. And then lastly, just continuing to support the community. Um, you we have great nonprofits here. We have uh, you know, the regional housing authorities is uh, you know, is established and making progress. Um, so I'm continuing to support um our nonprofits, our regional housing authority. Um, and if the Community Justice Center project comes um comes back up, we'll continue to work on that. And uh, and then I'm I'm definitely excited to be participating in um all the conversations with the the community center from a planning standpoint. Thank you.
Thanks, Chape. Uh, any questions for the planning department? Thank you very much. Very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the police department. Chief Chavez.
Evening, mayor, city council members, city administrator. Um, I want to cover my six goals that you have in your packet, but before I begin, I want to tell you that I've done this based upon not only uh forty years of experience working in a much larger department with much more larger and diverse and um more critical um issues. But also on after nine months of observation of this department after having led it since January second. So in looking at this, I look at these goals as being uh to provide essential services for law enforcement in the city of Leadville. Nothing in here is hasn't ended with any kind of fluff or a want to do or really be neat to do. It has to do with the essential functions of what this department must do. So I'll start with goal number one, which is increase community policing coverage by increasing sworn officer staffing from five full-time and one part-time to twelve full-time officers. We currently do not have the capacity and have not for a while to do twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five staffing and coverage for the city of Leadville uh to include time when officers are on vacation, wherever. This last month, we had to go to day shift only because I had I'm short an officer, actually two officers, and I had one on military leave and one uh on a vacation. So we could only do day shift only and no night, and we had to depend upon the county to do so. Increasing it to twelve total officers would enable it. Four officers per shift, three shifts would enable us to cover that coverage even when there's vacations or time off and stuff like that. Um, and my reasoning such as in this, in this packet. Coinciding with that is goal number two, which is to decrease officer burnout. Right now, they've been on twelve-hour shifts for a number of years. There's a lot of studies that have shown when officers work twelve-hour shifts, their accident rates go up, their complaint rates go up. And um and they ha- and they have difficulties. So it's eight hours or ten hour shifts. Prenomally, the ten-hour shift is the predominant professional standard that we see across virtually every department in the state of Colorado. And it's also a a work shift that we have to compete against. Currently, right now, officers have to work twelve-hour shifts and have to work eighty-six hours in a two-week period. This goal number two would mean switching them to ten-hour shifts and an eighty-hour two-week work period. So there'd be four officers per shift, three shifts, twelve officers. Okay? That would increase and assist with our retention and recruitment of other officers that we're trying to seek because if we're competing with other agencies that have ten-hour shifts, our twelve will be looked at. No, I don't like that. I'll go somewhere else, and we'll have a hard time retaining and recruiting. These two goals are are tied to each other because for them to work, both must be passed. Uh, going on to goal number three, uh, with adding these new officers, we'll have to have two supervisors at least to cover them. Uh, right now, one sergeant has the ability to provide oversight and supervision and training to the number of officers we have, but if we increase to twelve full-time officers, it will require two supervisors because that's too large of a span of control of twelve. An ideal amount is around the six to seven mark. So two supervisors would be able to do that. And additionally, if one supervisor is on vacation, we still have one around that can help and supervise and approve calls. Right now, if that supervisor goes on vacation, we have no supervisor at all. We have a depth of one. Goal number four, we have been doing uh animal control services for a a number of time, number of months, I understand. Our CSOs uh have limited training and very limited equipment. Uh, most cities you see have animal control services are provided by the animal shelter. They have, they take care of animals at the shelter itself, and they also have employees that go out and do um animal control duties. They have a properly equipped vehicle with cages and the proper training, and they go out there. If you send officers or even CSOs out sometimes, especially if you send officers, it can turn into an incident where uh the officer without the proper training and the cages and their vehicles and stuff can encounter a hostile animal or one that's a uh doesn't want to be caught or whatever, and then it turns into a situation, the animal turns on an officer. Uh, the officer used used to have to do force, and we don't want to see that. So it should be unarmed, specifically trained people. So by taking this away from animal control and putting it in the animal shelter personnel, it would alleviate the CSOs, community service officers of doing that job, and also give them more time to focus on city ordinance violations and parking, which they've been doing a lot of this last year uh and cleaning up several properties in the city of Leadville by their by their increased efforts to do so. And I'll I'll point out one one resident that the mayor is pretty familiar with that's over at um on West Sixth, and I'll just leave it at that. Uh, it's been cleaned up significantly as well as silver elders, and that's because of the efforts the CSOs focus on those violations. Moving on to goal number five, at this time, the Leadville Police Department does not have a specifically trained and appointed investigator. Every officer, if they get cases, they have, they're turned into the investigator of that case. They have to do follow-up and stuff and to file charges with the district attorney's office. We've had a number of very serious cases that I've had to handle based upon my experience writing search warrants and arrest warrants. And uh, but if I wasn't here, you wouldn't have anybody that's really well-trained. Um, you have some officers, two that are have a little bit of experience and four that have not. And you've lost one of those officers. So having someone that can specifically work on investigations, take that initial offense report by the officers, do the investigation, complete it, present it to the district attorney's office, do arrest warrants, do search warrants, and then come to a culmination and get a prosec- successful prosecution. That is the goal, to work with the district attorney's office and then. And I believe that by having an investigator would increase our capabilities of providing these functions for the citizens of Leadville. Finally, uh, goal number six, which is increase property management capability by hiring and trading a civilian evidence technician for the Leadville Police Department. Currently, we have uh no one that's doing that. The person that we that was doing it before uh quit the job, and there's been no one to do that. It takes a very specifically trained person to handle catalog um and dispose of or return property to individuals when it's brought in. It must be uh documented effectively and prudently, and involves everything from just normal everyday household items to firearms, to drugs, to money, to jewelry, uh, to a lot of things that must be kept in a very proper format. The Lake County Sheriff's Department has a specific evidence technician. We do not. So to do our job well and to make sure we avoid problems in this area, this would be uh something that I would recommend. Again, in in um culminating my speech here, all these six points, these six goals are tied to increasing and doing the essential functions that a police department must do to provide security and safety to it to its population. And that doing it by crime prevention and crime response measures. Any questions? That concludes my briefing.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any questions for the chief?
I probably have a few. The the property manager that you're talking about resigned in twenty twenty-two. Is that one of the open positions or?
It's not, but that was the, that was the uh police department administrator took on that function.
It was a dual duty function that that person handled, administrative supervisor and evidence technician both.
And then could you talk a little bit about retention based on, you know, the overview you've just given? I can only imagine it has a lot to do with not only salaries but also workload. Are there any other issues affecting our ability to retain officers in Leadville?
Well, I will tell you, there's not a single law enforcement agency in the state of Colorado today that is fully staffed. All of us, every agency across the board is struggling to retain and recruit qualified people. Uh, and we are now stealing from each other. So to become um on par with other in other departments, we have to do things um such as uh bonuses for hiring, retention bonuses for keeping people here, making sure we have the best shift um schedules. I, and that's why I mentioned a ten-hour shift into a ten-hour shift versus a twelve-hour. People look at, I don't want to work a twelve-hour shift because a twelve-hour shift is basically fourteen, getting ready for work, going to work, and then coming back from work. That leaves you virtually no time to do anything with your family or anything else. This is especially true if you're a single parent and you're trying to work with your own daycare. A ten-hour shift is much more palatable, and it is pretty much the predominant professional norm at this time, not only in Colorado but across the country. So if we're going to compete with these against these other agencies and hiring officers, we have to have these similar work schedules. Um, and it also prevents burnout. A twelve-hour shift, that's ti- that's more time in the in the in the in the driver's seat, that's more time encountering people. And again, studies have shown that accident rates go up, complaints go up, and uh and issues come up. So being being cautious of that is is and changing those work schedules is prudent. And of course, pay is always an issue. Um, you know, when people look at jobs, you know, what are they offering? You know, benefits, bonuses, salary, the whole package is what people look at. If they're going to come up here, and if we're going to entice those people to come up here to Leadville at this altitude in this area, we have to be competitive with our, against our other agencies in the state.
I noticed you you want to go from five and a half to twelve officers. Would that negate the two CSOs, or do you consider that the two CSOs would still be in place?
The two CSOs would still be in place, sir. The CSOs cannot answer law enforcement calls for service. They can't go to a burglary or an auto theft or a disturbance or domestic violence. They don't have the training or the equipment or the capability, lawful capability to do so. This is pure up. So by having four officers per shift on ten-hour shifts, you would have two officers working every shift seven days a week. For example, you could do, uh, we call it front half, back half. So two officers work. Um, I'll do one shift, day shift. Two officers work day shift, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The other two officers on that shift work Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Wednesday is an overlap day that you can utilize for training or special focus on certain areas like traffic enforcement or DUIs or whatever. Four officers per shift, three shifts, ten-hour shifts, where you have your overlap because that's thirty hours in a twenty-four-hour day, so you have a six hours of overlap. So you can overlap them on the times of the day when you have the most calls for service. And that gives you optimal coverage in your city. So let's say one shift works six AM to four PM, other shift works two PM to midnight, and the last shift works from ten PM to um ten PM to eight PM, eight AM. So you've overlapped your shifts. There's always somebody on. There's never anybody going out and coming back in the city not covered. And that's two officers working every single day, which means they can handle two separate calls at the same time. Or two officers can respond on a critical call like a domestic violence or an accident with injuries and cover it efficiently. And for us not to have to depend upon Lake County to cover us.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned Lake County. Um, how, would this change at all the police, city police department's relationship with the Lake County sheriff?
No, and I factored, think it would even improve it. Right now, these two agencies are are cooperating and getting along at the highest level they have. Uh, I would say what I've been told in decades. Uh, and that has to do with the fact that the sheriff and the chief have established an effective working relationship and that has filtered down between both organizations, and we effectively cover both. We're also deputized to um to respond and have the authority in the county, and that is to assist them when, just like they assist us. But they have. And have the authority in the county, and that is to assist them when, just like they assist us. But they have, he, their deputies have authority within the entire county. We technically only have the authority in Lake, in Leadville, but he's granted us that so we can effectively work and be protected. Uh, civilly, should innocent incidents happen out in the county that we cover them on. So to answer your question briefly, it would, it would improve it because we're, we're working effectively together, and we're taking care of our share of the calls.
Thank you.
And any question? Let me think about, okay. Thank you very much, chief.
Hi.
Um, next up, street, are you, you're one? Okay, in that case, come talk to us.
Good evening, my name is. Um, my thought on a week, it's because my day started at four o'clock, so. Yeah, that's the, that's the right meeting. I've got uh, the goals here for this year. Um, Lori helping with these. Um, they're kind of an extension from last year's goals that we're looking for. Uh, I was not aware of a lot of those, but they make sense now. Uh, a lot of our sidewalks and public spaces are going to be taken care of by hopefully maintenance personnel that we'll be trying to hire. Uh, we had one, uh, did not work out, so we are just answering for taking care of the city, certain city sidewalks and the parklets and. The Zice Park and um, Elm Street Park. And for right now, I've got one of my guys that's, is. At the airboat. But we're coming up to the snow in the winter time, so we've got to start getting ready for that, and. We're not going to have the ability to do all the streets and everything like that. Right now, I'm actually too per- uh, person short. For a full crew, but I also have several people out on uh, vacation due to medical issues and stuff like this, which would be in care of. So everything running, basically, I have crew right now, but we're still trying to complete all of our goals that we have. Uh, but right now. On the streets, for the winter time, our goals are to get every major corridor open by six AM. Depending on whether or not we can hire a few more people, we may have to extend that a couple hours, but. We get the main streets and school streets and all, you know, emergency access.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you. Tim and Sarah for being here. Uh, if you want to stick around, I, I'd, I'd love to hear if you have anything to impart to us, but if not. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Sorry, Tony, interrupted.
Um, very good save. Um. Major corridors uh, have been in town, city driveable by noon. Uh, we usually do that a lot earlier than that, usually by eight o'clock. We have everything done, but that's what they do.
You start at two in the snow, right?
One thirty, two o'clock, we get out there and just start on everything. And um, in between storms, we holler hills, knowing that we can. And that takes a lot of time, and it's kind of heavy duty wear on our equipment and stuff, which. We will be getting into one, but it's come up here, it's been on those. Um. So we can start getting ready this month, and we should have anything available and ready to go by the end of October, which is about the time we start getting more snow. We should be definitely ready for that. Um. We're going to be updating our, our snow guide, which. May, may just change a few times, not a whole lot of change on that, uh, as far as. Route or anything like that, but most of my guys are, are all set on their routes, and we, we should be in fairly good shape. On that, um, our goals for paving next summer are going to be, um. Could actually be paving the entire city and. Uh, be in good state, but we have very wanted source of the net, uh. Paving the asphalt right now, yeah, we'd be charged ninety-nine fifty a ton, and. Just for an example, a one-hundred block and two-hundred block of paint street here cost us eighty-one, eighty-one thousand to do that because they had. That was close to a hundred and fifty. I don't know exactly the number, and so, but that's how expensive it is to do this. Uh, for our list next year, what we'd like to definitely. Work on getting done would be the six-hundred block of West Third to McWhitty, which would be the old road right where the. Um, football stadium used to have their stand up there. Uh, that one's pretty much, pretty bad shape, and that is also a school route too, buses used that, and stuff, so we definitely want to. Get on that one. And um, Third Street, the one-hundred and two-hundred block, uh, they're just as bad as the one-hundred and two-hundred.
You're about West Third or East Third?
East Third.
Thank you.
East Third, yes, sorry. And then the one-hundred and two-hundred block of Elm Street and Chestnut Street, they're both very. Very dicey right now. Uh, Parkville has been doing a lot of repair work, um, digging up and everything, but. Now it's turning into just emergency work, so hopefully we've done all the repair and new connections that they need to do. Hopefully we have a section that wouldn't be cut up for. Couple months anyway. Um, we do require all utilities, uh, Excel. Uh, site-wise and art build, that when they fill in those, they use flow fill, which is a different material, it's a higher grade material to help. Smooth out everything, and it makes it more stable when they do their pavement, and it should extend our road.
You just said Parkville, but that's not a requirement for Parkville.
They've been doing it though.
Have they really?
Yes.
So I'm happy that, I'm happy to hear that. Okay.
They weren't very happy about it.
No, no, they hate it.
Need, and they, they've agreed to.
Okay, good. Nice work. Sorry for the interruption.
Um. And we are working with the sanitation in Parkville as far as what they know coming up on um. Road repairs that they need to do when they have to do install and stuff. A lot of this emergency work that they're doing. Uh, sometimes they don't even know until a day before. We had one last week, they had to cut down on maple and foresting. And they couldn't, they were in a board, and it was an overnight thing, so we had no. Warning on that one, but they do contract with uh, the hard comp, our, our paper. Sorry, it's been a long day. Um, and he is taking care of all that, and he is very good at what he does, he fixes all the patches, nothing, he does real good work. For us. Well. We're, we're happy with that. Um, to the next would be the drainage. Uh, we've got a situation where we may be able to get hold of a, a bunch of. ADS piping, which is the culvert, it's thirty-inch. Uh, culvert, which is the side that we'd like to see as much as we could all over town, and it's being. It's brand new right now, it's being used on a temporary site in Colorado Springs, and we have, we may have access to purchase. A whole bunch of it, had a reduced rate. Uh. A thirty-inch pipe by twenty foot, this costs about a thousand dollars right now for the ADS. The galvanized metal, the ones that have normally gone in traditionally, uh, the price goes out, they'll run in between twelve to fourteen hundred dollars. A piece, and that's a twenty-foot spit. One section that we want, would like to redo next summer, uh, we've already spoke to the property owners, and they're, we're happy about this, is at the bottom of Second Street. We've got two sections down there that need to be redone. We're going to need four sticks just for that, and. That's going to be expensive either way, but hopefully we can get into this purchase with this other company. Uh, we can kind of lower that cost for all of that there. And we should know about something about that within the next month. Um, they have to, what had happened to them is they had a specific piping that needed to go in there, but they had to actually have something in there temporarily. While the project is still going, so they have this stuff. But it's not what was called for in the plan, so they have to pull it up. And then they have no plans for it after that. Uh, a lot of that was going to end up in, just being exposed of. Luckily, we know some people, and they maybe will make us a good deal. And they know for the city, and they understand our situation, so they're trying to come up with their deal that we can afford and that they can live with. So hopefully we'll have some good news on that soon. Um, the fourth street culverts have been an issue for a couple of years now. Um, if we can actually get hold of this, this pipe here. We should be able to do something more drastic with the piping situation, the drainage uh, situation now on West Fourth Street. From uh, with the three hundred block down now. We should be able to help out with that. Plus, if we get into the situation where it's time for paving on our third road, if we know a culvert needs to be replaced. We can replace the culvert before they hit. And then it can be a smooth transition into all that there. Um. We have another situation upon Toledo, Old Toledo Street. Uh, I still need to get in touch with the uh. Property owners, well, they had a suggestion for us, but I just need to go to step with them and see if they're still interested in that. Um. Uh, capital improvements. We're looking at hoping to, we would love to have a new shop. But we don't understand the constraints on that. But a storage area for our equipment and our materials can be something that we could use for short-term until we keep coming to a better situation where. Shop is going to be very expensive, it's going to be proper, it's going to be building, and it's going to cost. Pretty good type of thing. But in the meantime, we can have something that could keep our equipment covered during the winter time and during the summer. And stuff that, you know, help with the longevity of all of our equipment, and we do have some new equipment right now, so we do need to keep it. Safe. And uh, and it increases any damages or. Anything that could happen to them, they're not, it's fine. Plus, we can hold on to some uh, storage area for our materials that we need, we could buy more, we have the gold patch more available to us instead of having to run the demo every time we need. To pick up a truckload and stuff like that. We are definitely in the need of a new service truck and a vacuum water jar system. Um, both of those would be very instrumental in getting some of our work done that we do now. Uh, we just spent now. Uh, example, three days cleaning two culverts that were a jar and a vacuum cleaner, we could have probably done in a day hours. It's just, that is how efficient both machines can be. Um. I'm looking into. Whether we can lease one or if we can rent one, and if we can rent something that will be uh. Usable, maybe we can work out a schedule to do certain covers and stuff, you know, so. But again, if we had our own, we don't have to, to worry about that. That's always our goal, we want our own. That we can maintain it, and we can make sure that it's used properly. Um. Another issue that's been questioned is the city wiring. We have sixty-three poles that have been put in, and from what I can find out, uh, most of those were put in early, in mid-eighties, I believe. And they're in kind of rough shape right now. And. Recently, we did have an elderly gentleman take out one of our poles and pour it to Harrison. Uh, I'm waiting for the um. Quote on that one, so then I'll have a quote on an individual price of those, and then we can start working on. Cause we're not going to be able to sixty-three of them, even. Even if they were a thousand, that's sixty-three thousand plus, then we are due to wire, we gotta do, yeah.
Currently, the, the replacement cost on one of those is seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, the solar options that have been presented to us are more expensive than that. It's, it's a huge lift. I'm not sure what we're going to do, but.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
We just, at least the pricing, at least the warranty, we have to replace one. Because they're, they're starting to get bad, I saw this the other day, uh, of the past when they went around and inspected all this, all those. Um, the metal is generally handles, uh. Using the bathroom on, but we're really taking toll on our wiring.
The originals had aluminum bases. We've replaced about half of them with steel.
Yeah.
Base and steel pole, but yeah. Good.
And I think that's it for.
Any questions for street department, before Tony falls asleep?
Yeah.
What makes two?
Next year, we'll put you first. We're going to go in reverse, I'll pick your order next.
Okay, I mentioned to Aaron, so we need to change the lettering on street department. You say city of Leadville Street Department?
Triple A city of what? Any questions? Thank you, Tony. Thanks for hanging in.
You're thanked and excused.
Thank you, Mary, for one.
Snap on your head.
How are you, man?
Good, honey.
Uh, these were really good presentations. Everybody did a really top-notch job. And almost nobody stayed in time. If that's okay, too.
Well, that's, uh, eight twenty-eight PM. It's not bad.
It's not six fifteen, okay.
Ten, ten different presentations, and we're done by eight twenty-eight? That's, that's good.
I, I really seriously was going to ask county commissioners for any input, if they wanted to give it, but I'm sorry that I didn't. I could do that, would you like me to do that, Hannah? Okay, then in that case, at eight twenty-nine. Uh, this city council work session is adjourned. Thank you all.